Well, five articles to go. First is to elect a town moderator. Is there any nominations?
Paul Gillis.
Thank you. In light of that possible conflict, I would turn the proceedings over to your chair.
Are there any other nominations?
Does he accept a nomination?
Doesn't have a choice.
If there's no other nominations, motion to close nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
All for Paul? For moderator? Motion carries, Paul's your moderator.
Thank you. Now, you know, every time, I always say, "I'm not going to be here forever, and you're going to have to think about succession." So, I will help anyone who would like to take on this job, and I can tell you, it's the best job in Berlin, because I'll be working about two hours, and I'll get listed first in the town report. And after I leave here, my duty's done, unless you call a special meeting. So...
What's the pay?
It's within your heart. Article 28 is to hear the reports of the town officers, and for that, we have traditionally gone through the report. And since we've talked about a lot of things today, this will be your opportunity to ask some questions that you haven't had an opportunity to shoot for. But let's start on the highway department, page 13. And they've managed to get the dedication this year, so congratulations. And then also Diane Isabel, the next page. I'm going to go through this unless you stop me and call right out. There's the annual report of the town clerk's office on 19, and the births and deaths records, which frankly worried me, and it looks like a lot more of us are going than coming here.
Your name's not there, is it?
I checked.
All right. Yeah.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, and, no, 22 is the Board of Civil Authority, the folks responsible for the checklist and the tax appeals. The budget is the next half a dozen pages. Yes, ma'am. Is that...
It's still pending.
Still pending?
We'll put that on the website when it's received.
Okay.
No, just a law court report?
Yeah, it's coming. Twenty-nine is the list of delinquent taxes. Assessors, used to be listers, 30, highway department, 31, zoning, 32, recrea... I'm going to go recreation committee, 35.
What percentage of expenditures are covered by taxes on business? And conversely, what percentage are paid by homeowners?
That is an excellent question. Can you speak to that?
I don't, I don't have that.
I'm not sure. I think it would take an assessor probably to total those up.
That is an excellent question.
Maybe a senior's a guess?
I don't even have that, quite honestly. It's an excellent question, and I would be interested in learning more. Thank you.
Give me a couple minutes if you would so.
Thank you. Thank you, Tor.
Volunteer department, fire department, report, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42. And then, after that, it all goes to private, nonprofit, and I, you should read these, but we wouldn't expect them to be called on unless they were in the previous pre-town meeting situation, so... Any other questions about the town report? I'm sure people, yes, Pat?
I think we all read the article about our CLA. That wasn't a good article. I just made a comment. And I think, but a lot of towns are struggling, like Mari City, theirs is down. And apparently, there's nobody able to do the reports of our value of our homes, etc. Are we looking to do that soon? Because it's been a while.
It has been a while, and we have been talking about the assessments, et cetera. It hasn't been scheduled at this point in time.
There's very few people to do it, and apparently, they're out years. So, we could be looking at the low CLA for quite a while. It's somewhat upsetting, I have to say.
It's a good point, and Tor can speak to that as well, how it will affect Berlin. But I did read the article too, and...
Yeah. We're not all, but we are one of the worst, because Berry is a little lower than nothing like us.
Right, right. We've seen the drop, and concerned.
We have all seen the big drop in our CLA this year, down to about 72%. So, we are going to be mandated by the state to do the town-like reappraisal. I know in the past couple of years, the select board has looked at it, but has not engaged with the appraisal, as far as I know, so we will have to start that process, and like I said, probably looking a couple of years out.
Yeah, because there's backup, there's very few around.
Correct, and there's, you know, a couple RFPs out by other towns right now for reappraisal services, so we'll just be further down on that list with very few companies to do that.
As soon as we can, because the last time we did it, Bruson got hit big time, because we hadn't done it for 10, 15 years, and we added some to our property. And yes, we had the benefit of those 10, 15 years of lower taxes, but when you get hit, it's a shocker.
It is a shock, and it's been 16 years now. Last time I did was in 2008.
Thank you, Pat.
Common level of appraisal.
Shall we go on to the 29? This is the longest article we have, and you are going to have to listen to me read it twice. So, the way this works is that I'll read it, and then I'll ask if someone will move it, and then if someone will second it, and then we can discuss it. And after we're done discussing it, I'll read it again, and we'll vote on it. So, bear with me. Shall the town collect its real and personal property taxes to defray the expenses of the town from the period July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 in installments? One-fourth of the taxes to be due by delivery or by U.S. Postal Service postmark, no private postal meter postmarks, honored before August 15, 2024? One-fourth of taxes due on or before November 15, 2024? One-fourth of the taxes due on or before February 15, 2025? And one-fourth due on or before May 15, 2025, with an 8% penalty and 1% interest per month or portion thereof to be charged for late payment of any installment? Will someone have the courage to bring this article before the assembly? Bob?
We have a moment.
And Pat is second. Would you like to discuss this in any way? Anybody have an opinion about it? Sir?
Derek Parker, Berlin. Is there any reason that I don't know? Is there a reason that we have to have to pay a big 8%?
A question.
I'm thinking the 8% penalty for a day or week, but my experience is, it seems to me that's the first of others, even more.
Question is, does it have to be the 8%? You are in franchise today to change it by an amendment, if the majority of you agree? This issue's come up many times in the last 10 years at least. Any interest in moving to amend 8% to some other percentage? Would take an amendment? Sir?
Does the town require that income? I mean, is there a...
Well, there's 8%.
What is this a month?
Well, 8% is something that the statute requires, state statute, but towns have the capacity to change it to a lesser amount, or I wouldn't recommend going above it, but...
How much is usually brought in from that? I think that's what you're asking here, right? How much does it logic?
I would hope that would be somewhere in the town report, under delinquent tax collection or perhaps a treasurer. Rachel, can you tell us where we would find that?
Or under, within the funding itself?
Under revenues to be received, would it be under penalties? Probably merged in with a lot of other late fees and things, but... Well, we'll put someone on that and find the answer, who can also find the answer to the difference between businesses paying taxes and residents. Something else, sir?
Well, I didn't come in here with a, this is probably because of Pat, I didn't come in here with a number in mind, because since we're only moving this for one year, we could try something, and see at the end of the year, if the superficial order of thinking is saying, pick a number of 2% or 1%.
Do you have a number in mind?
Yeah, 1%.
So, you are amending Article 29 to change 8% in the next to the last line to 2%. Is that correct?
He said 1%.
A 1%, I'm sorry. Is there anyone who would second that article, add that amendment?
I'll say.
There's a second. Discussion. Would you like to address it, sir?
Well, I just said what I said before. Since you made the call on somebody who's pregnant, and I know some people use taxes late, and in fact, they're below, because they see it as a federal rate, what's available in the bank, that, see, they gotta do that. But I think it's after it comes down hard on somebody who's pregnant, and the fact that they make present penalty for something that's a day or a week, or a month late, just strike, strike the vote over the top, and turn the taxes to the minimum.
Thank you. Sure?
Yes, I have some numbers from last fiscal year, total of $44,000, $45,000 that was brought in by the delinquent rates. Keep in mind that reducing this interest rate does not reduce the amount of the town budget, so any money we do not make up this way, we'll have to make up through property taxes.
Further discussion?
Again, Pat McDonald from Berlin. Sir, I know a couple years ago, as Paul mentioned, we discussed this odd infinitum, and we was trying to find the balance of, if you make it too low, they'll take their time paying, and the impacts of that, or we lose the money, interest on the money, and then everything else. But I'm wondering, can, if somebody is in need, can they go to the Board of Civil Authorities for an abatement for some kind of pay, you know, don't even payment, paying it out over months? Can they do that?
It's actually the Board of Abatement of Taxes, a separate board.
Yes, I could imagine, so they could go and tell them their problem, and what the, because I'm thinking this year, with everything that's happened, there's probably a lot of people in that situation. I personally don't all think that 1% is good, and maybe, maybe something else would be good work.
Are you prepared to offer an amendment to the amendment?
I don't know what, I don't even know if 8% is right.
It's 8% in the article, and the gentleman has done, has suggested 1%.
Yeah, I wouldn't second it. It's too low. But if they can, if they, sorry, it's 14.
All right. The amendment has been proposed to be amended. Is there someone who'll off, to 2%? And is there a second? Sorry, it fails for lack of a second. I'm sorry. All right, now, this is, this is, this is good for a moderator, because it's been pretty boring up to now. So, now we have an amendment, we have a main article for...
Why such a fore?
Four, I'm sorry, all right. So, anyway, we've got main, main article, which is Article 29, and that says 8%. And this gentleman has suggested 1%, and Pat has suggested 4%. And the way it works is that we go then in reverse order, so we'll be voting on whether to adopt the second amendment. The effect of the second amendment will be to amend the first amendment, we'll take a vote on that, and then, just to be sure we know what we're doing, we'll have a third vote. And by the way, I'll have to read this whole article every time we do this, but that's all right. So, first thing I'm going to, are you ready for the question? Any more discussion? We're going to be voting on 4%? And the article is now to read. I'm sorry, I can't see everybody. Yes, sir?
I have a question. If people pay quarterly, and they're later, they're reporting, is it 8% or 4% or 1%? Do you map to the quarter?
I, I think so.
So, if somebody paid an annual tax bill, say, $4,000, and they paid $1,000 quarterly, 1% would be $10.
Right.
And currently, 8% would be $8.
Correct.
And I'm just wondering how much time and effort it takes to process this, and it doesn't come in. Seems to me $8 is not a huge barrier for a lot of people to look at it in terms of being, they, like, everybody goes three months ahead to navigate property taxes, and I bet most people may be $8 for something else, but I think it's a matter of possibility.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir?
I have made a hearing earlier. I remember when this all came about, many years ago, we put the 8% in there as a return for people that were always paying late. The reason that they put the 8% level threshold, is like the man just saying, 1% is just a drop in the bucket, it doesn't deserve them doing it. If they pay late, it's the money in the bank, they get the interest, we don't. So therefore, it was more of a return than to put somebody in hardship. I don't believe changing it is going to change anything, other than give them the option of not paying. I would just believe they accept.
Okay, anybody else?
I would like to withdraw my amendment, because I remember that conversation.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know. I think that your amendment has been proposed, and it's been seconded, and it doesn't belong to you anymore, it belongs to all of us. So, yes, sir?
I have a question on how this percentage applies. Is it per month?
No, the penalty is a one-time fee. There, if you look at the article, there's an interest fee that comes every month, but if you're late, that's it, you're 8%.
It does say 8% per month, doesn't it?
No, it's a...
No, it really doesn't. You've got to put the per month with the interest. Yeah. Okay, so, we have... All right, up here.
I, you know, the gentleman in the pullover is absolutely correct. I moved here nine years ago, from a town that did our taxes twice a year, so I wasn't familiar with this four-time-a-year thing. I missed by one day, and I paid that 8%, and whatever interest was for one day. I have not missed since nine years. I will not miss. It's a little pricey, you know, it is. Whatever. It's enough money to make me pay on.
Greg, you had something?
Yeah, I have heard, I've been in meetings where the treasurer of the town has said how much it costs, like, how expensive it is to chase down people who are choosing to pay late. So, it's not just, it's an unconscious account, and helping people not gain on that.
Are you ready to vote on the second amendment? That's not the second amendment of the Vermont Constitution, that's the second amendment to Article 29. But if you don't want to, I suppose, if there was a unanimous vote to withdraw it in support of the mover and the seconder, that would work?
We can just...
I don't know. You're on the edge of my facility at this point. Would you agree that we could just put it up to a vote, see how it goes?
I don't want to be that...
Therefore, the second amendment would read, "Shall the town collect its real and personal property taxes to defray the expenses of the town for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 in installments? One-fourth of this taxes to be due by delivery or by U.S. Postal Service postmark, no private postal meter postmarks, honored before August 15, 2024? One-fourth of the taxes due on or before November 15, 2024? One-fourth of the taxes due on or before February 15, 2025? And one-fourth due on or before May 15, 2025, with a, and this would be the amended 4% penalty, and a 1% interest per month or portion thereof to be charged for late payment of any installment? All in favor of the amendment, which would change 8% to 4%, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The moderator is uncertain. That means that the next step should be, you're also comfortable, you're raising your hands, so all those in favor of accepting the amendment, raise your hand. And I'd ask the select board to do accounting here, so I'm, raise your hand? Well, I guess, that's one, two, three, four, five. Okay, and those opposed, the amendment fails. Now, we're in the first amendment, the primary amendment, as they say. And this, and this is the, this is the way it would read, what we're voting on. Shall the town collect its real and personal property taxes to defray the expenses of the town for the period July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 in installments? One-fourth of the taxes to be due by delivery or by U.S. Postal Service postmark, no private postal meter postmarks, honored before August 15, 2024? One-fourth of the taxes due on or before November 15, 2024? One-fourth of the taxes due on or before February 15, 2025? And one-fourth due on or before May 15, 2025, with a 1% penalty and a 1% interest per month or portion thereof to be charged for late payment of an installment? All those in favor of the primary amendment, say aye. And those opposed, say no.
No.
We are now back to the original Article 29 as amended. Are there any other amendments? Is there any other questions or comments?
Not amended.
I'm sorry?
You misspoke. You said "as amended," but it's not.
No, as unamended. I'll read it, so you know what we're talking about. Anne, you have a point?
If amended, just occasionally, because Ken and I will give feedback, a bill just passed, a house that would make it uniform around the state, that interest would be a half percent instead of 1%. So, that the monthly interest for late payments would be reduced from 1% to half a percent per month. So, let us know what you think of that.
Okay, focus on what we're doing. We're right in the middle of Article 29. Done. Amendment to the amendment, it failed. We did amendment, it failed. Now, we're back to the original article. This will be the 8%, but you've got to hear me say it again. Shall the town collect its real and personal property taxes to defray the expenses of the town for the period July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 in installments? One-fourth of the taxes to be due by delivery or by U.S. Postal Service postmark, no private postal meter postmark, honored before August 15, 2024? One-fourth of the taxes due on or before November 15, 2024? One-fourth of the taxes due on or before February 15, 2025? And one-fourth due on or before May 15, 2025, with an 8% penalty and 1% interest per month or portion thereof to be charged for late payment of any installment? All in favor of this article, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The article passes. Article 30 is, says, "Shall the voters of the town of Berlin call upon the United States Postal Service to establish a post office and zip code within the town to service its residents and businesses?" Wait, wait till I call for the vote. Anyone want to talk about that?
So, here again, there's a one-pager on the front table, also on the website, giving a little background on this. You know, Berlin has been without a post office for 25, no, 35-plus years at this point, and there's been several efforts over the past 20-plus years to re-establish a post office. I've given a brief summary of some of these efforts on this page. All of these letters and documents are on the town website to take a look at. In 2008, Pat and her committee did a major effort to, our congressional delegation and everything, including lots of letters of support petitions and everything like that. And it's kind of languished a couple of times since then. With the flooding in the Montpelier Post Office that occurred last summer, took a bad situation and made it even worse. You know, that, that whole continuity of government situation in the Montpelier Post Office is just totally unacceptable as a government organization, but it does, in my mind, provide us another opportunity here, since they're looking at what to do with the Montpelier Post Office. I think it's good, once again, to, you know, re-establish our efforts here in Berlin. Let's work with the post office, with the work they're doing in Montpelier, and finally get us a post office that we need, and a zip code that we deserve here in Berlin. I know the sister mentioned it earlier, with the efforts with the online ordering and the options tax with the different zip codes. Pat, you've mentioned before something about a refrigerator not getting delivered. We've all got stories to tell about how, you know, you know, GPS doesn't work, businesses are misbranded, you know, you mentioned something, the bowling alley, I think, was, was, you know, called themselves some berry. I've seen car dealerships call themselves some berry. They have big directions on their websites, that you can't just put it in your GPS and get here. I think it's time, and, you know, I said it the wrong way, I said the squeaky mouse gets the wheel, but that's not right. The squeaky wheel gets the oil, so, you know, I'm prepared to make another effort at this and see where we can go.
Tor, why doesn't it say "re-establish"? Because we did have a post office and a zip code until sometime in the 80s.
You made a pen.
Probably because I just, because I wrote this at the last minute. Does that count? Haste makes waste.
Yeah, let's amend it.
Let me get this back to the moderator.
If somebody amends it, are you amending it?
Has it been moved, Paul?
I haven't heard, I'm just inquiring.
Sure, I'll...
I'm not pushing it, I'm just asking, if you want to amend it.
It now's appropriate time, I don't think about moved, so I don't know that it's the appropriate time.
Ooh, stepped on that. All right, well, we've talked about it a little, and who will move it?
I'll move it.
Who will second it?
I'll say.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Now we're okay. How would you like to amend it?
I'd like to amend it to say, reestablish a post office instead of that.
All right, is there a second?
Because I think that's important for people to know.
Wait, 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 don't discuss it till we get a second.
I'll second that.
All right, now you may discuss it.
I just think it's really important for people to have that understanding that we did have one. There is a zip code out there that is still about us.
Any other discussion?
Why did they leave?
Why did they leave?
Why, why did they stop doing it? I haven't been here that long, 10 years, sorry, I don't have that history.
Somebody either died or moved, and the post office decided, since a lot of our mail went out to Montpelier, that we didn't need to continue on having one. That's the basic stuff. But that's for a while. I mean, we've got post offices elsewhere, but before zip code happens. But Riverton is for a while, so.
Okay, so, here we are again, we have a primary amendment. The article, if you accept that primary amendment, would be, "Shall the voters of the town of Berlin call upon the United States Postal Service to," add an R, "reestablish a post office and zip code within the town to service its residents and businesses." And that, been a long day so far. Has it been moved and seconded?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Are you ready for the question?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment to add, to change established to reestablish, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Now, we have to vote it again, because all we did was amend the article as warned. So, "Shall the voters of the town of Berlin call upon the United States Postal Service to reestablish a post office and zip code within the town to service its residents and businesses?" All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Article 31, "To discuss other business that may legally come before the meeting, cannot be used for binding action, but it may be used for a resolution or a sense of the town." And it's also traditionally used to thank people for their services. And before I forget, I think it's only appropriate that we give thanks to our select board and our administrators. And as long as it warms you up, how about the road crew? Has anyone, anything to add, any announcements, or opinions, or whatever? Yes?
Best tackle what you said, we owe a great deal of thanks to our road crew for the work they did during and immediately after the floods. They did a great job getting the roads reopened, and a lot of work done. There's still work to do, as we all know, but we owe them a great deal of thanks. Also to our police and car departments, they worked effortlessly during the floods, evacuating people. The police department, they were going door-to-door in hip-deep water, on foot, delivering medications to people who needed them. So we owe them a great deal of thanks.
I'll wait my turn.
I'll keep it short. Among other things, I am the town's representative to the Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District, and I am going to be stepping back from that to just be an alternate, as opposed to the primary representative on the district board. It is in our town report, and I was gonna look that up before I turned out to do that. So, there is a report to the town from the Solid Waste Management District in the town report. The board meets eight times a year, it's not a large burden to represent the town's interests, but it's an important group that serves to reduce waste and handle waste in a safe manner, to take care of household hazardous waste and other toxic waste that exists in our community but needs to be appropriately managed. So if anyone is interested in serving in that way, I'd encourage you to get in touch with either me or with Tour, and we'll try to find someone to continue being the town's voice on this important municipal entity. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Joe?
Yeah, there's a small group that doesn't necessarily get a lot of recognition, I'm gonna call it out, is the emergency management. Bruce Richardson, he kind of heads up the, a small group of people that play the what-if game. Well, truly, that what-if comes along. Tour is actually also part of that group. They, they support the road crew, PD, the fire department, and all of us. This is a very small group that really could use a hand. So they meet, I believe, on the second Thursday of every month, there at the fire department. Secondly, on your way out, if anyone thinks they need a COVID test, grab a couple to go. I'm gonna tell you, March 23rd is a Saturday pie breakfast, and it's gonna be at the Berlin Fire Department. It's a great community of, you know, gathering. I don't necessarily care, this is all, I think there is probably a set price, but it's a fundraiser, but it's great to have communities come together. Also, on May 4th, the Red Cross is gonna be doing their sound, Sound the Alarm. So there, if there's anyone here in the community, I don't care if it's your home, your neighbors, your friends, whatever that is, look on Front Porch Forum, look at the website, I believe the Red Cross website, we can sign up. We'll have people going out, putting in smoke detectors in any of one of these homes. And I just want to thank the Berlin Fire Department very much for your dedication. They are gonna be serving lunch as a donation, and if you don't want to stick around and eat and talk with your friends or whatnot, you want to grab something to go, they are able to do that for you as well. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to speak on behalf of the Conservation Commission. One of my frustrations is that trees don't seem to have a voice, and there are, we need to take care of our land, and we could use some more people to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey there, Corinne Cooper, President of the Berlin Historical Society, which didn't, it wasn't as active as usual this year. I was one of the people who got flooded out, but we would love to have more people involved. We've been trying to do some stuff behind the scenes. You'll see in the town report, starting on page 46, there's a lot of information about prior floods, not just the 1927 and '92 and 2011 that people think of, but a whole lot of history on it with more to still be dug out. We would love to have more people join us, especially if they're willing to work on some projects, and we would love to get to having some office hours manned, whether it be during the day, or in the evening, or on the weekend, even if it's just a couple of hours. So I hope you'll consider that, and in the report, it tells you how you can get hold of me. Thanks.
Thanks. Last chance. Article 31, or no, there's no article, we're done with this article, but there's something we need to do before we go, which is dismiss the meeting. So is, would anyone bring a motion to, to end this meeting? Bob, and a second? Somebody? Yes, thank you. All in favor of ending this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
Nay.
What many heads do you call?
Thank you, see you next week, here.